All right, seven o'clock, like to call a meeting in order, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note everybody's present tonight, which is great. We'll start with old business, the approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of March 7, 2024, were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 7, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion passed with extra noise. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? No takers? Item number 200 presentations is Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. And Marcus, can you help me out here to present it?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of our communities and a majority of child abuse and neglect occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations that are preventable, but without community resources and support, they do not know how to cope. And child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behavior such as smoking. And child abuse, child abuse and neglect is a community problem that can be reduced by making sure each family has the support of prevention programs created among social services, school, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community. And together, we can strengthen and support families in raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, Anthony R. McNeil, Mayor of the City of Lansing, State of Kansas, does hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Come on, Connie.
Okay. Item number three is a presentation from Lisa Hack from the Executive Director of LCDC. Glad to have you.
Can you hear me?
It's Marcus's phone.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor McNeil, City Council members. Tim, thank you for having me today. My name is Lisa Hack and I'm the Executive Director of Leavenworth County Development Corporation. I have been with LCDC for, since 2017, and then I moved into the director role about a year and a half ago. Tonight, I am going to do, I'm going to do a presentation. What I'm going to do is I'm going to start with talking really briefly about the structure of LCDC, the funding. I'll try to go through that part pretty quickly, some of you already know about that. But then I am going to talk to you about how we do economic development, and then I'm going to talk to you about what we can do for LC, for Lansing, okay? And if you have questions, please let me know as we go through the slides. There we go. So first, the thank you to you all, you are one of our investors. We are funded, we're a public-private organization. We are nonprofit, we're funded in part by the Port Authority. The Port Authority is funded by the county. We are funded by the four main cities, Leavenworth, Lansing, Baser and Tongonoxie, and that's determined through a formula that takes into account population and property valuation. And then we have about 70 private sector members, so they provide about 22% of our budget. Why do we do it that way? Because we feel bringing the expertise of both the public and the private together and working together for a shared goal is a really important thing for Leavenworth County. It also allows us to move a little bit faster than government can, but utilizing those, that expertise. Oh, I went the wrong way, didn't I? So quickly, we are guided by a board of directors. We have right now 26, we're by, our bylaws state that we must have 18 to 27. 20 of those are private sector board members, and then six are public sector. And Tim Vandal is our public sector board member for the City of Lansing. We are guided, led by five executive committee members. The picture here on the far left, that's Jeremy Greenemeyer. He's in the president role right now. He'll, he'll, he's finished one year, he's getting ready to finish, go through his second year, and then it'll roll to the next person, the vice president, which is Brian Habian. And then obviously, we have three staff members, myself, Diana Dodd, who is here, is our assistant director, and then Mary Mack, you all probably know her, she's our office manager. So real quick, there's the definition of economic development according to the International Economic Development Council. And so this kind of gives you, it's to improve economic well-being and the quality of life for a community. And that gives you a very wide net. So with three staff members and a limited amount of funding, we have to be strategic. So we feel like we try to find what we feel like it's the most bang for your buck, and we pick the primary industry, the industrial. We feel like these are the economic drivers. This kind of gives you a little idea of why we kind of think about that. Primary industry is usually a company that makes a product, sells it outside the community, bringing new dollars, therefore increasing the wealth of a community. So as you can see here, they hire a lot of people. Those people all need to buy gas, they need to buy lunch, they need to sometimes buy houses. So they increase the population. Then they also, these kind of companies create the demand for the retail, like the Quick Trips and the La Mesa's. They also create demand for ancillary companies, so all the different commercial companies, HVAC companies, different construction companies, the list goes on. And then that, the amount of money that they pay in property taxes is significantly higher. You all know that a, a commercial retail industrial building, they are taxed on 25% of their assessed value. So that's significantly higher when you're talking about a $2 million building. Then you've got houses, they are paying at 11%. So we feel like we've got to, like I said, we have a limited amount of staff, we have a limited amount of funding, so we need to really be strategic in where we focus our efforts. And we feel like that it creates the demand that everybody feels throughout the county. I want to give you a couple of examples here. So we're not going to call them out by name, but you've got a couple of existing businesses, three of them in our county, A, B, and C. Eight, they came in 2005, they started at, with 35 employees. They started within one building, and they had a 10-year tax abatement. They are now well past that, they pay full property taxes. They now employ 200 people. And 125 of, four of those employees live in the county. So that's people that live here, in, in our community. And so that property tax for 2023 was obviously $233,495.64. And the, as you all know, the mill levy for the City of Lansing, if I'm correct, is, oh no, I'm sorry, for this particular company, is 117.684. So of that, for the school districts, they pay 53.443. And that school district is Lansing, 469. So 45% of the taxes goes to the School of Lansing, the School District of Lansing. So that's $105,073 that's going to them every year. Number, letter B, the company there, they opened in 1979. They recently doubled their footprint. They formerly employed 75, and now they employ 145. Their 2,022 property taxes were 40, a little over 49,000, and now they're up to 111,000 for 2023. Again, they are paying their school, the portion of the school tax goes to the Lansing School District. And same with C, they're a new company, but they will grow, obviously, like the A and B. But they're, they have a 60-year, 60% tax abatement, they're employed at 20. And so their current tax would be, once they get done with their tax abatement, is a little over 30,000. And about 45% of that goes to, once again, the City of Lansing. So how do we do economic development? We do economic development through business attraction, and then we do it for business retention and expansion. My job, other than overseeing the operations of LCDC, I also work on business attraction. And the way that we do that is we have a professional website that provides information for site selectors. Site selectors are those that are hired by companies to find their next location. And I also would think of like real estate developers and, and other kinds of developers. We also do a lot of social media. Diana spends a lot of her time posting on Facebook, on all the other, I always forget. What's some of the, I can't think of. There you go. All of that. And then we have email blasts that we put together. We, we've done that for Lansing Town Center. We've had our candid, we contract with a company called Candid Marketing, and they'll put together a really nice brochure, we'll send it out to over 200 developers and real estate agents in the Kansas City area and nationwide. Then also, we do networking events. I go to several events in Kansas City today. I went to one with the crew organization, that's Commercial Real Estate for Women. And so we get together, we went and saw a project on 18th and Vine, but it gets us an opportunity to meet other developers and talk and get, develop those relationships. And I get to highlight our community, a lot of times, several times today, they ask me, what's going on in Leavenworth? And I get to tell them about the cool things going on in Leavenworth. And then eventually, you hope that you start doing some type of business together or have them come and show them around. The other way that I do business attraction is by responding to requests for information, or RFIs. So these typically come from our Regional Economic Development Organization, KCA DC, or the Kansas Department of Commerce, or sometimes straight from the actual client. And this is a very simple example of what I might receive in my email box. It will come to me with the subject line project, and this one's called Seminole. They're all given a project name. They are coded until the company has let, has decided that they want to be known. A lot of times, I don't even know who they are until we are, you know, well down the line of, of doing a deal. And so a lot of times, they'll tell me, this one says, we're working on a, we're working with a client that is interested in expanding its footprint to the Kansas City metro and surrounding area. The client's a manufacturer, and they're looking for a minimum of 20 acres, and they want to build a 50,000 square foot facility. They'll plan to hire 35 employees with an average wage of 55,000, and then the capital investment on this one is 50 million. This one is a very easy one, it just says, please send a cover letter and a brochure. So I'll put together what they've asked for. Well, I'm sorry, first step I do is I go to the community where I think that a property that would fit this project would be. So for instance, if I think that it would fit in Lansing, I would call Tim. And I would say, what do you think about this? And if he gives me the okay, then I would go ahead and submit or prepare, do the, the work of gathering information and putting it into the process, into the, the way that they'd like it. This week, we got one that was super, super labor intensive. This one had an Excel sheet, it, Excel workbook basically with a couple of tabs with lots and lots of questions. Some of the questions were like, what seismic zone are you in? What was the most recent natural disaster that occurred? And when was that? Most of the time, it wants to know utility information. They want to know if your, your property can serve this particular capacity for water, for wastewater, for electricity, for gas. And for each of those, I need to reach out to those utilities. And many times, for instance, like power, they have to send that information to their engineers. And then their engineers will have questions, and then I will have to go find that out, and then we'll go back. So you can imagine the time that it takes to gather all that information. And then, as I said, there's always questions that you just never, no two RFIs are alike. And then they might want to have you send brochures, and I put together a cover letter. And so we package all this information together, and then we send it out. And then we just wait. Sometimes we hear back, sometimes we never hear anything. Sometimes they might want to come and visit. So this is, I'll just talk quickly about where these projects come from. If you look in the column for 2024, we've had nine, in this particular one, we've had more this week, but we've had nine leads this year. And of those nine, if you go all the way to the right column, you'll see five of those came from Department of Commerce. The number in parentheses, 19, is last year, so you can compare year to year. So of the nine, three came from our Regional Economic Development Organization, KCA DC, and one came directly to LCDC from that actual client. So that's kind of how we keep track of where we get those leads. It becomes a prospect anytime I start doing work on it. Sometimes I just don't, I know right off the bat, if they need, have to have rail, then obviously I don't. We're keeping track of that so that we can kind of talk about why are we not, why are we missing out on some of the projects? If, if it needs an existing building that's 100,000, I just, we just don't have it. So I keep track of that as well. So that's business attraction. Business retention, expansion, according to the International Economic Development Council, over half of a community's capital investment comes from existing businesses who grow and expand. So that's why it's important that we have a robust, we call it BRE program. And that's what Diana does, she works every day to help our existing businesses. And she does that, she starts with annual visits, at least annual visits, and those annual visits, she can find out what kind of issues they may be having and maybe connect them to resources. She helps with assistance, she assists them with state programs and also with workforce solutions. So she's got her toolbox, she's got all kinds of things that she can pull out for any type of issue that they may be experiencing. First of all, having those, developing those relationships with those businesses is really important because a business is going to be more likely to share with you issues that they're having, or maybe, maybe even share that they might be getting ready to leave. That's important that we know that before it happens. So those relationships and that trust is really important. Diana spends some time doing state programs for these companies. There are state programs that help companies save money. They have to be spending, investing back into their community to, to take part in these, and they also have to be paying above-average wages. So she does the work. She keeps track of when these documents are due. She puts the information into the documents, she takes it to the companies, she has them sign it, she packages it, and she'll even take it to the post office. So we see that as a value for these companies. She works with the workforce partnerships, sorry, she works with our partners in the workforce. She develops relationships with the community college, especially Kansas City Community College. She develops relationships with all of the high schools. In fact, she's been recently working with Lansing and Leavenworth and KCK coming together to talk about how they can develop some great CT, career technical education programs so that we have a ready-to-go workforce pipeline here in Leavenworth County. They're going to be working with all the other school districts as well. And then also, she's been putting together our first annual job fair. So she had, she put together one last year, she's going to have another one this year in May. So that's a really important way to, to provide workforce solutions for our companies. And then she can help with some gap funding loans and grants and those sort of things. So we just see that as the money that she helps these companies save that goes back into those companies through expansion, that increased the investment in the work sites and in their, and in their employees, that helps lower the taxes because when you've got more industrial businesses and bigger ones, they're paying more property tax, and then we have a prosperous community. Lots of numbers, I know, I'll just say quickly, we keep track of our investment, all of these. This is how we quantify the work that we do. This does not account for any ancillary businesses that come from the businesses that we help. It doesn't count for anything that, like the homes that these people buy. But this, all the companies that we assist, that we help either come here or stay here, this is how we quantify that work. So we've helped facilitate the recreation and retention of 183 jobs over the last three years. And we've helped them save almost $2 million over the last three years. And then capital investment, because of the work we've done, we've helped facilitate over $75 million in the last three years. So what can we do for Lansing? Let me get to my notes. So as Lansing, much like any of the cities anywhere, are, they, they are bearing much of the tax burden. We do government well here, as you know. It's a good thing, but it's also a bad thing. It's a good thing because we don't, it keeps our economy steady. We don't see the highs and lows that some of the other economies have. And so that is a good thing. But it does mean that our homeowners are bearing a lot of that tax burden. So what we intend to help with is helping you diversify. We can help market Lansing, we can help diversify Lansing's tax base through industrial development, and we can help ease the tax burden of those owners, of those homeowners. How? That is through industrial property. I need some industrial property that I can market for you. That's my, that's what we do every day. And so... Did I miss one? I did. I wanted to go back to this one again, we talked about it. I just wanted you to take a look once more time at the property taxes that Company A pays. That's $233,495. And I looked at, I looked up to see what a typical house in Lansing would cost, and my Google search said 288,000. That's probably under what it should be. But what I did is I figured out the taxes that they would pay here in Lansing. And I came up with about $4,200 a year. And so I just thought it was really interesting that it would take 55 homeowners' homes to make up that property tax bill that the Company A is paying. It would take 26 to, to make up the, for what the property tax bill is for B, and then eight for C, once they are done with their tax abatement. So that's kind of one of the things that we see why, while we feel like it's extremely important to have homes, and it's extremely important to have retail. We want to help you diversify and add to that, which is through industrial. And what we, what I think that would be great is to have, what you guys are already doing, I mean, all the sewer improvements that you are doing, all those things, then exciting news from the Kansas Department of Commerce that they're going to realign K5. I mean, that's fabulous, and it's going to open up business, open up for Lansing. It would be great to have some industrial property to market for you guys. And if you guys decide to do that, I want to share with you what I know about that. I know from all the projects that come across my desk, those properties, we, we're going to need probably at least 200 acres. At the time when they built the Leavenworth business in Technology Park, 81 acres was big. But now projects have gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, so at least 200 acres if possible. What I'm seeing is they want truly shovel-ready property. Now what does that mean? Shovel-ready, they want a Phase One environmental study done on it. They want it graded, they want utilities to, at least to the park, if not inside the park. They want water detention basins in the park. They want it zoned, at least, light industrial, and then they would like to have an incentive policy. So that takes a lot of planning. It's, it's, what you're looking to do is reduce the upfront cost for these companies to be competitive against other people in the, in the area. Why Lansing? Because you are located in the greater KC metro area. That's important, I don't know if you know this, but within two days, you can ship anything anywhere in the United States. So we are right in the center of the United States, that's very attractive for people looking for places to locate. You're in proximity, the proximity you all are to the highways and the interstate, that's huge. You're just right there. It's a great place to live. I mean, obviously, you guys live there. And then you have a workforce pipeline. I don't know if you know this, but, well, I think you've heard Councilmember Clemens talk about, there is 67.9% of our residential workforce in Leavenworth County leaves every day for work. That's an opportunity for an incoming company. So that's a workforce pipeline. We have a labor shed in Leavenworth County of over 2 million. That means within a 45-minute radius, drive time, we have over 2 million people that are in the workforce. And the reason is because we reach into three metro areas, into Kansas City, Lawrence, and to Topeka. So that's, that's attractive. And we have a labor shed study that we have done a couple of times. The most recent one was in 2022, so it's about time to do another one. But that will support that data. So we also have a Leavenworth County Port Authority. You will recognize someone up there. Councilmember Dan Clemens is one of our board members, he is your City of Lansing appointee. The, the Leavenworth County Port Authority, it's one of two left. It is, was established in 1969 to encourage economic development along the river. And so as logistics changed over the years, rather than get rid of the Port Authority, they decided to just change their mission to encourage economic development throughout the county. But they're, the way, LCDC, they're a board of complete volunteers. So LCDC provides their staff work, we do their staff work for them. The Port Authority has a few benefits that LCDC doesn't. The Port Authority can own land, LCDC can't. So the Port Authority has the, had started with owning the Gary Carlson Business Park in Leavenworth, and then the Urban Hess Business Park in Tongonoxie, which we've got a few lots left in each of those. So as I said, they were, so, okay, so what I wanted to tell you about this organization is that they have now a industrial site visioning committee. And that committee is tasked with recommending a site or sites for a future business park, industrial business park. And Lansing is at the table for this. They started out with educating the group on what, how it was done before in Leavenworth County. And then they brought in experts from the Department of Commerce, KCA DC. We've had people, let's see, we had Hunt Midwest, one of the bigger developers in Kansas City, come and talk to us about project activity, what they're seeing. And that's, some of the, that is where we learned that they, they really want over 200 acres. And then we had, most recently, rail, Union Pacific came and talked to us about that. And then I think Councilmember Clemens just sent you all some information that they provided us. So I encourage you to look at that. So what, then what will happen is once they have evaluate, or what they're going to do next is evaluate sites. And then they will give a recommendation of where a site could be for a new business park. From there, and that should happen sometime this spring or summer, from there, it'll be up to the communities to decide if they want to move forward or not. But we would like to be there for you, LCDC would be like, like to be there to help you market those parks. But we would like to be there for you. LCDC would be like, like to be there to help you market those parks. And I think, well, I guess I should just say we have our quarterly investment. LCDC has a quarterly investor luncheons, four times. We have a board meeting every month. But four times we have, instead of a board meeting, we have an investor luncheon. And on April eleventh is our next one. We actually have Panasonic coming to talk about their their project. And so we definitely, they have some policies, corporate policies that require that they know who's going to be there. So we really need you to RSVP if you'd like to come. So contact us at LCDC. You can purchase lunch. It's fifteen dollars for members and twenty for non-members. And that's from eleven-thirty to one. And it's going to be this time in Tonganoxie at the Deer Ridge Estate, which is a beautiful wedding venue or an event type of venue. So that'll be really interesting. Golf tournament is our biggest fundraiser. It'll be September thirteenth. We're doing that at Fort Leavenworth. And where our job fair is May tenth. That'll be at the Heritage Center, eleven to one. And our investor appreciation event, we'd love for you all to come. That's November seventh at Falcon Lakes. And then finally, we'll have another annual meeting next January. Do you all have any questions for me?
Earlier, you talked about when a company sends you information or requirements for what they're looking for, and you have to look for a place, an area that's suitable for them. You mentioned that you look for the best spot. And I was wondering if you just look for one spot in the county or if you look for several for them to pick from?
That was my question too.
Right. And it depends on the project. I definitely carefully look at the project typically. When they're asking, when this is an industrial project, they're asking for a shovel-ready site. And that's what we have few of in our, in our county. Now, occasionally, these projects will say it doesn't need to be a greenfield shovel-ready site. And so then I will look at all places that I know about. So it's really important for us to have that. And we do have a database in our, a property database in our website. So if you know of properties, I need to know. I need to have that information because I'll go in and look in there. But again, typically for industrial projects, yes, it it definitely needs to be a shovel-ready park or shovel-ready site. But yes, it's, it depends on the project.
You say that, but industrial park in Leavenworth off of Eisenhower is sitting vacant for a lot of years.
Right. I understand. And and we, that has been considered several times. In fact, it just recently was top two for a huge data center. So I know it seems like a really long time in the economic development world, in industrial world. It's, it, yes, we'd like to get it sold, but it's not as long as it seems. I would say we do have some challenges there. One of the biggest things that we have, and this might be something for you all as you consider industrial parks, is having residential night right next to it. It is an issue. It will take the right company that wants to locate there, and it won't be a problem. But we have had a situation where a company came and was afraid to deal with that. They just don't want to deal with, I mean, even though they were there first, the residents aren't going to feel that way. So we do have that challenge. So there are, it will eventually sell. I I'm confident in that. But yet, it's taking a while.
You said that they want it shovel-ready, and that's a huge investment
Yes.
in a small city like this. You know, that's a, that's a huge, huge investment. And I would too, if I was in industrial, you know, looking for, I'd like for wherever I go to pay for everything upfront. So I don't have to pay for anything.
Right.
And then I'm going to come to you and I'm going to ask you for tax-free for ten or fifteen years. We don't even pay taxes. Because you want me there.
Right.
I mean, that's what we're going to now, isn't it? That's the way the businesses are leaning towards is you give me everything free and put it up front, and then I'll think about coming?
Well.
Kind of the way you presented it, is we pay for everything upfront in hopes that.
I would say it takes a while for them to build up in the beginning. It's, is the way it is. Yes, to be competitive, you got to be willing to be aggressive. But I would share with you the examples again. Number A, or number, letter A, the one I just talked with you about. They came here, two thousand and five. They, you know, were given a tax abatement. They finished that tax abatement, and now they've doubled that footprint. They are from thirty-five to two hundred employees who are living and spending money in our community. So I guess the the money upfront, yes, it's painful. And hopefully, we can, you know, in the planning, you can get ways to collaborate and share some of those costs, whether it's with the county or with the Department of Commerce or, you know, those kinds of grants, those kind of things. But that, the investment upfront is worth what happens over time in the end. And and it takes a long time. I know.
I understand all that. I just, I'm just looking at today's new business practices, and that's, that's what we're seeing a lot of.
What is the actual model?
I'm sorry?
Funding model for that. I mean, I thought like the business parks were given like ten million dollars from county or something. So I mean, what is typically, that wouldn't all be on the city?
Right. Well, in, oh, sorry.
Is that true? Or how does it work?
So in the past, in the past, here in Leavenworth County, it was a collaboration, it was a shared cost. For the city of Leavenworth, it was about five million from the city and five million from county. Similar in Tonganoxie. Probably it's going to cost a little more than that now with costs that have gone up, but.
But it was a shared, I I was just making a point that it's not all in the city. If if we're going to do it, it'd be kind of a collaboration with county.
The other thing that's not in there is all the money that you get from the employees. They have to eat lunch somewhere. They travel through the community, they gotta pay gas.
Economic impact in the.
Absolutely. So yeah, so even though the company is getting an abatement, we're still getting taxes from the employees and the products and that kind of stuff.
We only had some. Any other questions? All right.
Well, you have, you are always welcome to email me or call me anytime. Thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it.
All right. After that one, we have the Waste Management discussion. I'm not sure who's leading it.
Hello. My name is John Blessing with Waste Management. I know some of the faces, but not all. So it's nice to come out and introduce myself again. And really, I just have an update of some stuff from Waste Management and and the contract with Lansing, in addition to just kind of coming out and being seen, right? I spoke with our route manager, the route manager that governs the routes in Lansing. Her name is Sybil. I know a lot of the staff know who that is. And got some information there. You now have a team of seven drivers that run all the services in Lansing. I've got some notes on them. Most of them have been here two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. And all but one of them have been on the Lansing route now for just about a year. The person that's the newest has only been on for a couple of months was a driver with Waste Management, actually left to go work for competitor, found out that wasn't the best, came back, was a swing driver. If you don't know what a swing driver is, it's a driver that will take any route anywhere in the city, you know, kind of fill in. And when an opening came on the Lansing route, they had run Lansing before, and they said, we, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather work Lansing full-time. So we have drivers that actually want to service your town, which is kind of nice to hear. Again, the route manager's name is Sybil. I spoke to her, and she says she talks to the drivers normally throughout the day. So before they leave town, normally they check in. I know we've, we had practice where they would come in and check in. That happens. Sometimes it doesn't, depending upon how much time they have. Twenty twenty-four, some exciting news is the rollout of our Smart Truck for Waste Management. We rolled out this technology starting in twenty twenty-two and finished in twenty twenty-three for the commercial line of business. So it's already running in in Lansing. It's really just the same truck, but it just has a whole bunch of new technology on it, improved GPS. The thing I like most about it is it's covered with cameras. It has cameras on the side that will take a picture of the house and the driveway and the cart, or no cart when they're there. And then those types of pictures are used later when someone says they weren't serviced, or if there's maybe something set out that isn't allowed. You know, they can take a picture of it, and that's all stored in a database that I have access to, that our dispatchers and our call center have access to. So when people call in and they've got questions, we can say, you know, here's where we were, and here's what, you know, what we saw. They even have a video, and it it films what's dumped into the truck. And that's not looked at live, but I guess there is some AI or something that reviews that. And you can look to see, you know, does this customer need to be talked to because they're they're dumping stuff in the trash that that shouldn't go in there? It's really used for recycling. When that recycling container dumps out and it's filled with plastic bags, then, you know, we know we've got somebody to educate. Speaking of some recycling education, we were talking with your library staff. Looks like we're going to put together another recycling, you know, presentation. We did one a couple of years ago at the library, had a good turnout and just kind of talk about the do's and don'ts of recycling. In addition to those, those smart trucks that are rolling out, I think you already know that all of our fleet, especially the fleet that runs in Lansing, runs on compressed natural gas. I looked at your website, and you've got a picture of our truck on the trash part and right on the truck. It says this truck runs on natural gas, so you're doing great. That is a big selling point for Waste Management. And the the caveat to that is we finally finished in twenty twenty-three, the very beginning of twenty twenty-three, that the Johns County landfill is now a renewable natural gas producer. So what that means in a very loose way, the trash we collect, we dump in the landfill. We have partnered with a third-party gas company that harvests natural gas out of the landfill. And then we buy our natural gas from that company. And so you can say that the truck runs on the natural gas from the very trash that it puts in the, in the landfill. As far as some some contractual updates, this being March is the anniversary of the contract. So that's when the annual, the contractually allowed prices increase, price increases go into effect. The contract allows for the rolling twelve-month average of the consumer pricing index for trash. When I was having this conversation with Tim in January, it was at five point four percent. February and March are at five point five, but I ran it through at the five point four. But just to kind of give you an update, that's where that's going for March. We did notice there were a couple of accounts. I don't know if they were actually getting billed, but they were being billed for a second recycling container of five dollars, which we don't do that anymore. We give anyone who wants an additional recycling cart one for free. So we reached out to them, removed them, and they kept their carts. We just removed the charges and refunded some of them, that that stuff as well. Last but not least, I did see on, when I was looking at that cool truck on your website, I noticed that your garage sales are coming up in May. Just wanted to remind the council or staff even that your residents get a bulk item collection as part of, you know, the contractual services. They have to call and schedule that. But I know when the, we see that jump a lot after garage sales because not everything sells. And then, you know, what do you do with it? Right? So just wanted to remind the residents that they've got that option as part of their, their service as well. That's all I have for you. If there's any questions, happy to answer them or at least take them down and and get some answers.
I've got a question on your recycling.
Yeah.
I was told a couple of weeks ago that the recycling that you pick up, say in Lansing, all the recycling are the yellow barrels. And only about twenty percent of that is actually really recycled. The rest of it, the eighty percent, goes actually into the landfill. Is that a true statement?
It's backwards. You have, you have the ratio backwards. About eighty percent, the the contamination rate in recycling runs about twenty percent. So normally, about twenty percent of everything that's in that cart, unfortunately, is, you know, diapers or food or, you know, something that people shouldn't be putting in there. About eighty percent is is clean recycling. And that, you know, not necessarily for everybody. I mean, you might have a hundred percent clean, and somebody else might have a hundred percent, you're dirty. But on average, yeah, on average, about.
Comment was just made to me that, that, you know, why recycle if it's, you know, majority of it's going to go into the landfill anyhow? And I said, I don't think that's.
Oh, no. No, no.
That's why I wanted to ask you that question.
Yeah, absolutely. It's it's about eighty-twenty, and the Kansas City metropolitan area was running around twenty-five percent. And it's around, actually, I think the last we heard it was dropping to about eighteen. So our recycling education things that we're doing, like at the library and things, it's working, right? It's working.
Well, that was something I was going to touch on. We, knock on wood. We have had very few complaints. There are some weeks where we don't get any. I know, like today, we had a couple of people call, like they were having landscaping vehicles, and they wanted to make sure the trash truck got their trash, or they had cement vehicles on their road. And and the staff has been really responsive. They're, they're very responsive to us. I sent out an email and some, I think it was Sybil who responded back and was like, hey, we'll, we'll put a ticket in, and the truck will circle back around and get those, those houses that have been blocked by the truck. So I would say we have very minimal number of calls, and for the most part, it's not trash. It's either yard waste or recycling for some reason, so.
You just reminded me of something as we're approaching, because we have, we have families that move in every year with the military, right? Do they coordinate for the management, the West, and recycle when the moving trucks are going to be in the way? And we got multiple moving trucks up and down the road. Do they coordinate that ahead of time? Is that, is that something we put out to inform everyone to, you can still get your trash and recycle picked up even though you got your moving truck in the way?
We haven't had too, honestly, we don't ever have too many issues with that. When people call, if they say they're, if they let us know, hey, we're going to have a moving truck, we try to educate them and say, hey, if you put your carts in a spot where the trucks can still access them, you shouldn't have an issue. It's not, it's not their fault if, if a moving truck pulls up and the people have put their carts right behind the moving truck. So we do try to educate people and say, make sure your carts are accessible.
Educate everybody.
Yeah. A couple of times, we've had somebody who's called and and the driver will come back and, you know, they've made a note and said there was a car blocking the way. The truck couldn't get in to get the the carts.
One thing I.
So then we educate the resident.
I'm cut in on most of those, those emails and that communication. And one thing that is great is it comes in so fast that we'll get a notification while the guys are still here. And then we can, you know, we can take care of that same day.
We try to, as soon as we get a call, we try to let their staff know so that if they're still in the city, it's a lot easier than having to try to get them to come back through at another time.
We've gotten a couple where the truck just stopped and then left, and it was because they were full and they had to go to the landfill and then they're coming back. You know, it's like, but we appreciate it.
Or they're leaving town and miss Rock Creek Loop. That's the big one.
Yeah.
When they leave town, they just ride right past Rock Creek Loop.
Yeah.
Hopefully, when I do that, because that one is on everybody's watch list.
Yeah, we haven't had that issue in a while. So, so, yeah, it's, we, we have a lot fewer calls than we've had in years past. So it's, it's been really.
And hopefully, some of that is, that team that I talked about. I mean, once you get a good, stable team, and I think, you know, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one, the labor market was so crazy. I mean, we were going through staff, and, but I think we've got a solid, you know, group, and it sounds like they're doing a pretty good job.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Beth. All right, new business. Item number five, appointment of trade boards in a appeals member. Thomas Lahon has agreed to fill the vacant seats on the Plumbing Board of Appeals and the Building Board of Appeals. Mr. Lahon's term would be from March twenty-first to twenty twenty-four, from to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I need a motion to appoint Thomas Lahon to fill the vacant seat on the Plumbing Board of Appeals and the Building Board of Appeals with both terms ending on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Don't move.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Thanks for your patience, Tom. Yeah, I know you had to sit through all those briefs, and that's what happens when you're item number five, I mean. Bad deal.
But you look really nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any discussion on this one? I have a motion, a second. Call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Tom, you win? No, thanks so much for volunteering.
Thanks for doing it, Tom.
Item number six is Resolution B five twenty twenty-four. Resolution extending the termination date of the interlocal agreement from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four at eleven fifty-nine PM. I need a motion to approve Resolution B five twenty twenty-four as presented.
Don't move.
Motion, a second, any discussion?
I don't have a discussion. I just want the other members to know how much work Marcus and the mayor and Tim have done to coordinate, calm down things, and move, move things forward. You guys, I've been sitting in on these meetings, and they have gone way overboard in trying to make everybody happy and get this thing finished up.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Anybody else on this one? I have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is Executive Session Preliminary Discussion on Acquisition of Real Property. Need a motion to go into executive session for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen. KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B six for ten minutes, beginning at seven fifty and ending at eight o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Are you making the motion?
Are you ready?
Uh-huh. Yep.
All right, I move. We return to open.
Okay. Thanks.
Move. If you turn off the session.
We already got it.
We already got it.
Yep. We're just doing roll.
All right, I have a motion and a second to return to open session. Call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
We are back in open session and we made no binding decisions, so don't even mention them. Okay, we'll go around the horn. That was our last item, so reports. Any department heads? Gosh, I know you came to say stuff, but I shut you down. So if you want any, you know, you can have some time back. Okay, you're good? All right. City attorney?
Nothing reported.
All right. Tim?
So our first meeting in July falls on July fourth.
I will be here.
Yes. So I was going to ask you guys, we could do it Wednesday, the third, but I know sometimes people like to take a long weekend, so I don't know if we would want to have that on Tuesday, July second. Does that seem reasonable to you guys? Tuesday, July second?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
I see a little bit of head nodding.
Don made a good point. I mean, how essential is that meeting? I mean, any harm in?
I, I guess we're so far out, I don't know what's on the agenda right now.
We usually skip the second Thursday. That's a nothing, right? So couldn't you hold that on the second Thursday?
Yeah.
We could, yeah.
And then we have another one.
So July eleventh, we can do that, so, okay. Everyone's okay with that, so we'll do July eleventh.
Four-week lead.
All right, cool. Well, that sounds good. We put on the big screen, this is a draft of what Shockey Consulting calls their placemat. So this shows our vision statement, a draft vision statement, guiding principles and some of the projects or the top priorities that came up from our strategic planning session. So I wanted you all to see this, to get some feedback from you all. I know when you look at our vision statement, that was something we spoke about a lot at the meeting, the different characteristics of our community and everything, so.
Can I have a list of copies?
Yep, I can email it to you guys. And I don't need an answer right now, but I, I did wanna put this out there so you guys can see it. I'll email you guys a copy and then if you wanna give me some feedback on that, you could.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Looks really good, though.
It, it does say excellent schools on there, so that was. Remember, that was a discussion topic, so, yep. Okay, well, I will go ahead and email that to you guys and, and solicit feedback from you all. I had a meeting with representatives from Leavenworth County, the city of Leavenworth and KC ATA, Kansas City Area Transit Authority about a week and a half ago. A couple of the things that they brought up, normally if a city is doing this fresh, they would do some type of study or a formal survey. Those would normally cost thirty thousand dollars. But one of the things that they had said since, since this is, it would be extending an existing one. KCATA thought it was reasonable. If, if we wanted to skip the study and survey, we could. And that could save us a little bit of money. If we did want to do a study or survey, it sounds like there's kind of a grant program where they would pay for probably eighty percent of that. We would have to pay for a portion of that. But if there is a study of transit in Lansing and Leavenworth, you know, that would take a few months. And like I said, our share might be five thousand dollars or so. They said the setup fee to extend the boundaries would be about four thousand dollars. Another thing, as we were discussing, I asked them about timelines so we can begin budgeting for this. And there was a little bit of a chuckle and they said, you know, we won't be able to get vans or buses in nine months. So it sounds like there's a pretty long wait line in order to get those vans and, and things like that. So even if we wanted to, I, I don't think we'll be in shape to get this started in January. But, but we can still talk about it at the budget season, so. So that's one thing I'll throw out to you guys.
Did they give a, I'm sorry, did they give a timeline about how long it would take?
They thought it might be twelve to eighteen months.
That's, that's what I've heard.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not surprised.
So even, even if you guys all unanimously said today, hey, let's do it, we wouldn't be able to start in January, so. But.
I thought that was, I mean, personally, I thought that was a stretch.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes it's just nice when things start January one and you can budget for it and everything. But again, going back to the idea of a study or survey or something like that, again, the city can do that. There is costs associated with that and that would set us back a few months. But that could gauge community interest, potential ridership, things like that.
Right, I, I mean, based on what they briefed us on, Tim, when Leavenworth came, I mean, I think we can pretty much use their study because it was done in the region anyways. The survey would probably be important to find out just how much interest there is in the community who would use it.
That's the key for us.
Yeah, I mean, so, I don't know, I would just recommend we look, look towards doing a survey by trying to redo a study.
Yeah, but we can, we can look at doing something like that then to try to gauge our residents' interest in that. Absolutely, we can do that, so, okay. I know Leavenworth is still working on getting us an estimate as far as what our annual costs would be and things like that. So I still don't have a number for you quite yet on that, but I think they're trying to work something like that. But overall, it was a really good meeting. It was nice to, to talk to representatives from KC ATA. I think they're excited about the prospect of perhaps expanding that program. So, yeah, I'll, I'll report back and we'll look at doing some type of survey, so that sounds good.
Anything else?
Yeah, I know, a couple more things, yeah, absolutely.
We didn't wanna cut you off, you know, KU's playing, but go ahead.
South Dakota State is playing right now, but yeah, USD's not. So the center drive lights are on, so be sure to take a look at that. Those are programmed where we can adjust the brightness. So if you guys are driving and you feel like it's too bright or not bright enough.
You know what they're setting them down?
They're set at ten. Right? They're set at ten.
You'll have a good opportunity tonight on your way home, because it'll be dark.
Is that ten hours walk? Brightest they're gonna get.
It's full blast right now, so.
That's what?
Full blast.
That's it?
High as low. Full blast, yeah.
People full blast.
Okay. And then the Mid-America Regional Council is currently having their call for projects. Lansing has four different roadway projects that are on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So those are the four types of, those are the four roads that we could apply for grants for. So that's grants that are federal dollars dispersed onto the Mid-America Regional Council. So if we wanted to apply, we could apply to extend Gilman to one-hundred-and-forty-seventh, kind of close to the high school. We could apply for one-hundred-and-forty-seventh Street from four H to McIntyre, for DeSoto Road from Ida to four H, or to just redo four H and the roundabout. One thing to keep in mind, I mean, all of these projects are, I wanna say like the least expensive estimate was still eight million dollars. So these are big projects. And even if we are able to get grant funding, you know, we're still responsible for twenty percent of that. The one thing about that is since this is federal dollars, it would take a while to filter down. So we would have a few years to plan for it if we wanted to do that. So if we wanted to do, whether it's Gilman or four H or whatever, we could kind of plan for that and pencil that money in for twenty twenty-seven or something like that, so. But they do need a letter of interest that we're intending to apply, I think by that first week of April. So I did wanna put that bug in your guys' ear. And then we can talk about it a little bit at the work session, too, if you guys wanna kick it around for a week or so, which project you think might be the best for Lansing to apply for, so. You guys have any thoughts about it right now or anything?
Or even the roundabout.
Four H and roundabout?
Yeah.
I like the idea of Gilman because anybody at the park, that would give them an alternative of fighting seven seventy-three getting, getting home without going through Rock Creek.
Yeah. That was the one that jumped out at me because we always have so many people talking about wanting us to put a stoplight at that intersection. And, and that would shift traffic away from that intersection. Well, if, if you guys wanna kick it around a little bit and at the work session next week, I'll try to get more feedback from you guys on if, if we intend to apply to redo four H and construct the roundabout or if we want to do the Gilman Road thing, so. Did you have something, Mayor?
I was just wondering, when, when does the, the bond that we put against DeSoto Road first time, when are those?
Oh, fourteen years, probably.
What's the deadline for requesting the?
The, so the actual application, I think, isn't due until June or July. So we, we would have a lot of time to do the formal application.
Yeah.
But I think Mark just wants, you have to fill out, it's, it's a very brief letter of intent kind of talking about what level of engineering work you've done, what the project encompasses, traffic counts, maybe, things like that. So, so we do need to let them know that we're intending to apply before we apply, so.
I mean, if we.
That's a caper.
It's April fifth or sixth, I think.
Ida to West Mary.
So we didn't.
Building that three-lane road down.
If you guys could give us feedback at the work session, that'd be good.
Okay, perfect.
Move the phase two of the old DeSoto Road. That's the one you're talking about, Ida.
That's, that's.
Ida to West Mary.
Yep, that's one of them that's listed on the Metropolitan Transportation.
If we're gonna put a, a clock center in there, that'd be nice to have a three-lane all the way down to West Mary.
Wonderful.
Yep, we can.
Talk about it during.
I'll follow up next week with you guys, so. That's all I have.
Yeah, I would put that strategic vision stuff on the work session, too, yeah. People can look at it.
Sure you got it and nothing else?
I, I could, I, I do have something else I was gonna say, but I, but I won't.
All right, around the horn, Jesse.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, Pete?
I, no, sir.
Dan?
Nothing additional, Mayor.
Carrie?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Don?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Don. Kevin?
Uh, thank Mr. Lahon for volunteering and the ladies for coming in for LCDC. And Terry, I didn't have, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's, it's just outstanding what's going on over there at the library with you and your staff and the friends at the library. I saw there, it's like one, one child a day that's getting a box of, what's it, crayons or something like that. It's just, everything going on over there is just amazing, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks. Gene?
I don't have anything there.
All right. Marcus?
It was a great meeting tonight, Mayor. This was good. We had a lot of great presentations tonight as well. I appreciate everybody on that. And with that, a move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Just kidding. Call roll.
Mr. Garvey? Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yep, no doubt.
What? Thanks. Mr. Major?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hook 'em horns.